Hello again all.
Hello.
Thank you today for sending me what I needed, appreciate that. Not quite sure what the issue is, but um. Let's see, see what we have on the line here.
Bear with us, we're having a little technical difficulty.
Do we have any expected declines for our meeting this evening from trustees?
Everyone confirmed, but I need to ask the person on the line. The number ending two six zero zero, I believe that's Jeff or Vicky. Can you confirm please?
Yes, this is Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Jeff.
Yep. Hi, how are you?
Good.
We're just missing Vicky.
Okay, we'll give her another minute and we'll get started.
Thank you.
Once we get there. Are we still having technical issues? I don't know.
John saved the day.
Thank you, John.
Glad to help.
Why don't we go and get started for Vicky will join soon, so can you call the roll please?
Yes, and let me, let me record this on the cloud and. Okay. Thank you. So Mary Kate Mearon.
Present.
Max Starks.
Present.
Vicky Kraus.
Present.
Sam Alid Hogan.
Present.
Norman Rodan.
Present.
And Jeff Sattler.
Present.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you all, Vicky today, and good evening all. So we'll start with our fiscal year 2021 audit update. We just came out of our audit meeting, audit committee meeting. And we had a good discussion with Lisa, Michael and Karen. And I'd like for them to kind of walk through at a summary level. The detail we just discussed with the Ways and Means Committee.
All right, I can, I'm gonna speak on behalf of Mike and I as it relates. Can everybody hear me? Yeah, okay, as it relates to the college. I did go, Mike and I did go into much greater detail than just this with the audit committee. But we did issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements of the college, which is the best opinion you can have. We also noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control. We did test journal entry, journal entries, disbursements, student revenues and payroll. And noted no issues there and we tested the internal controls surrounding them. So more, more the sign offs and who says yes to this and who's who, how things are being. Well, well, with the changes because of COVID, how things are changed and how things have changed. And has been making sure that everything is staying up to par as it relates to your internal controls. Again, found no issues there. Um, we are independent of the college and if there was anything that came to our attention that required us to communicate to the board. You would have heard from us and you didn't hear from us. Um, there were two major items, so to speak, that we did bring up. Um, and one of them relates to the HERF funding. Basically, um, the HERF funding is in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And the college was awarded $26.8 million of funding. Of that, about 11.4 million has been spent between FY21 and FY20. So the remaining amount will be spent in FY22 with a potential extension of FY23. And another major transaction that happened during FY21 was the environmental remediation liability was recorded on your books. And it relates to the cleaning up of the lead on the green on the central quad. Um, so this has kind of been talked about, it's been included in the financials for a few years now. But this year, study was done, invoices were received, estimates were received. And the estimate of that liability is about 1.8 million. And now because it's estimatable and it's probable that it's going to occur and accrual needs to be made. So there's a liability included in accounts payable on the financial of about 1.8. And a comparable amount of about 1.7 is going to be funded by DCAM. So that's sitting on the asset side of the balance sheet. Um, and then overall revenues were down, but that's a, that's a direct result of enrollment decrease. And your operating expenses were slightly increased, but again, that's because of that 1.8 million dollars that I did discuss that relates to the environmental remediation. Um, and those are the major points that we talked about. I would say the major thing to take away from there is that the opinion that when we did opine on the financials, it was an unmodified opinion, which is the best. Um, that you can get and we had no disagreements with management and everything went very smoothly, given the way this audit had to go where we were working remotely. Her funds were a big part of the audit and it was, it wasn't easy, but management was great to work with. We have a great relationship with them and we appreciate all their hard work because it made our lives just really easy or as easy as it can for an audit, put it that way.
Thank you, Lisa, appreciate that overview. You know, you and Michael did a very good job of taking us through more detail, you know, at the audit committee meeting. But, um, but what you just went through were the highlights. I don't have anything else on my notes that you didn't go over, so I appreciate that, that overview. Any questions, comments that anyone has for Lisa or Michael on their audit? Okay.
This is Jeff, I just, Mac, I just have one quick comment, just because I've been working on the facilities aspect of things, especially that DCAM money. I understand that by the end, by June of 2022, we need to spend X amount of money. Is there any contingency there if we're not able to spend that on projects that were DCAM approved? That 11.4 million dollars, I know I'm going into the reads a little bit, but I'm just curious if there's any, any footnote to that.
Oh, you're talking about the HERF funding, are you talking about the HERF funding?
Yes.
Yep, so, so yep, you're right, right, as of right now, it does have to be spent by the end of FY22. But we are, we're fairly confident that there's going to be an extension on that. Um, and that you will, that will be able to be spent in FY23. It. I'm under the impression that there will be an extension, Mike, if you disagree, you can say, but I, I'm pretty sure that there will be an extension granted to the community colleges.
Yeah, I think most of the schools that we've seen, I think there is typically a no cost extension that is allowable for federal grants. And I think most community colleges that, you know, we've seen are kind of looking, not even just community colleges, but most schools are looking at that as an avenue to try to. Basically, give yourself two years to spend this money, that last round, really.
Good question, Jeff, good question. Anyone else, any other questions, comments? Okay, so we do have a motion on the actual audit of the financials, if someone could please read the motion. Thank you, Norman, did you say you would read it?
I said I'll second it, but.
I, I'll read it for you, I'll read it for you, Mac. That the Springfield Technical Community College Board of Trustee Committee on Ways and Means pursuant to the provision of Section 22, Chapter 15A, approved the FY2021 financial statements and audits as presented.
Great, thank you, Mary Kate, interject for a second.
Second.
Great, thank you, Norm, any opposed? Great, so moved. So, and again, thank you all, the auditors, you know, for again, the thorough update, you know, at our audit committee meeting and here, very, very nice overview. Really appreciate, you know, the, the work that you all do. And, you know, your candor around even your, your relationship and working with the, with the management team. It's very good to hear that there's, there was no disagreements and that things went as smoothly as they could, as you mentioned, given the COVID environment. So thank you very much for that overview.
Excuse me, Mac, I need to do a roll call for the motion.
Sure, yep, absolutely, yep, so please take the roll.
So Mary Kate Mearon.
Yes.
Max Starks.
Yes.
Vicky Kraus.
Yes.
Sam Alid Hogan.
Yes.
Norman Rodan. And Jeff Sattler.
You're on mute, Norman.
Yes, sorry about that.
Thank you, no, and Jeff Sattler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, now really so moved, thank you very much today. Now we can go right into our fiscal year financials. Andrea or John?
Good evening, everyone, so before we get started, just tonight, we're going to present the, what we have for financial results for the first quarter of FY22. Uh, before we do that, I just want to thank the auditors, like on my screen, I can't see if they're still with us. Um, and in particular, thank Dorothy Unger and John Toodren for all their work and, you know, the team here, just people might not realize it's, it's. A few months of pretty intense work to prepare for the audit, so I just want to recognize all of their hard work. So thanks to them and we'll just move right into the cash flow with John.
Thank you. Okay, you'll see at the, the time that this report was prepared, the blue bar indicates the cash balance was, which was approximately 4.6 million dollars. This week, we have called in our fall financial aid dispersment and that totaled approximately 4 million dollars. Bringing our total available balance to 8.4 million dollars that's at TD Bank. Um, we've also identified on this chart, two additional spikes throughout the rest of this fiscal year, spikes in cash. Um, and that would be the spring financial aid dispersment, which is taking place at the end of February. And then also a HERF loss revenue call down, which is taking place in May. So generally speaking, this is what we would expect to see for a cash balance, again. Modified for the adjustment that we've referenced at the previous Ways and Means meeting when we, when we sent funds down to fiduciants. Um, and we had the additional cash, similar to what the auditors just, just pointed out at the end of the fiscal year. As we presented at the last meeting as well. Um, we, we didn't provide all of the detail because that would be about seven or eight pages worth of information, but we did summarize here. The, a summary of transactions by line item. Um, we're also showing you what the beginning cash balance was on July 1st in this first column here. You will see the actual transactions through September 26th in the next column. Um, and if you. See at the very bottom, we have 4.6 million dollars, that's representative of what looked at on the, on the charts that represents the blue line on the chart. And then here are the projected transactions through the rest of the fiscal year in the third column. And again, this is where we expect to end the year with approximately 3.2 million dollars available. So there's really nothing that's falling out of line. There are not any significant changes compared to what we presented at the, the last monthly meeting. Are there any questions?
None for me, John, I'm glad you walked through it that way. Again, it's the transfer over to fiduciants that really driving that reduction of the 14 mil down to the four and a half million bucks for this year. But through, through 926 and then 3.2 million for the end of the fiscal year, so no questions for me. Any other questions of John? Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, John, so I will just give an update on fall 21 enrollment. So the last time we met, it was at the very beginning of the fall semester and numbers were very preliminary. Now, we don't have final numbers for fall, but we're getting pretty close, so just wanted to update you, especially given that the. Um, enrollment is really the biggest risk in the budget. So what I'll do is share some information about where we are with credits for now and then look at some scenarios about based on what could happen in the spring. So in this, uh, in this graph here, on the left, we have budgeted credits and on the right, we have. Actual or projected credits. And so the, the figures in, in green, that's summer one, summer two from in FY22 and, and fall 21. And then in blue, we've got the projected numbers, the budget and projected numbers for, for spring. So if we look at the, the fall and the fall numbers, we're very, very close to budget, like as close as we really could be. Uh, summer two was a bit behind budget by about 260 credits of 12%, but the fall credits are ahead of budget by a little bit. And so when you put it all together, it's, it's very close to budget. When we look at spring, at this point, it's still too early to project spring, so right now our projection is the same as budget. But, um, you know, given some of the risks going into spring, I wanted to take a look on the next slide. If we can go ahead there to see what will happen with different scenarios in the spring. So on this slide, if you look all the way on the right, that's our approved budget. So the zero there represents a zero dollars variance from the budget. So we had originally, we budgeted for fall to be 10% down from last year and sprint to be 5% down. Uh, the status as of today, which is in the, in the red at the bottom, so the, the second to the right column, our credits are just a tiny bit behind. Behind budget, but actually the revenue is actually ahead because of the mix of in-state versus out-of-state tuition. So, but very close to budget percentage wise. When we think ahead to spring, you know, when, when we, we assumed that spring would be 5% down from last year in the budget. And at that time, we really thought that we'd be further along in terms of the kind of rebuilding from, from COVID. But at this point, you know, we haven't really recovered, you know, the, the whole community is really, you know, not. Coming out of the COVID situation as we would have hoped. And so, you know, I just really want the committee to understand what the impact might be if instead of hitting 5% behind last year. You know, if, if spring ends up being 8% behind last year, it impacts revenue by a negative $275,000 approximately. If we're 12% behind, it's about $630,000 and if we're 15% behind, it's about 900,000. So we just don't know what it will be, but, and I think it's important for the committee just to really understand what the impact could be. On revenue with, with changes in, in enrollment in spring from, from where we, you know, from what we budgeted. So I'll stop there and see if there are questions about this.
Andrea, thanks for. For the walk, I just got a question on the actual, how the numbers are working. So, so 8% down is, is 275. So if, if, if you double that, you know, you're going to be, you know, somewhere, call it around five, almost 600,000 down. And we're seeing 15% down in the spring, but we're 900,000, you know, we're showing 900,000 down. Is there something going on with credits in that?
Uh, I have to look, I mean, I think that, you know, these are estimates. So I'm looking at John to see if, I, I see him, I see his, his eyes like doing some calculations.
You don't have to answer that later, but the math on that just doesn't seem to connect, but.
Yeah, it's really more like the, the difference between the 5% and the 8% compared to the difference between the 8% and the 15%. So the, the 275 is representing a 3% change from the budget. And then the 15, you know, the difference between the 8% and the 15% is representing a 7% change from 8% to 15%. So it's really just incremental based on the budget, it's not.
Okay.
Does, does that help?
Yeah, let me, let me think that through, okay, we can move on.
Um, I just have a question in terms of how much, how much is in this original budget? How much are we pulling out of the HERF funds or how much of that COVID money gets us to that zero balance?
So on the, I think it's about 4 million in lost revenue. Again, I'll ask John, so, okay, yeah, so it's about 4 million in lost revenue. It's in the budget to help reconcile the budget at our budgeted revenue. So if the budget, if, if the enrollment ends up being less than what we budgeted, we could pull more funds for lost revenue, but it would pull it away from other things. So we, even though, and by the way, even though the auditors have said that we could potentially get a no cost extension. To use the HERF funds beyond this fiscal year. We have actually accounted for all those funds so far in our budget. With a combination of lost revenue and some direct expenses. So that's just another little added piece, but, um, you know, if we, if it turns out that we're at that $900,000, they have worth minus 15%. And, and the revenue is down by $900,000, I don't know that we can make up all of that, but we can make up some of that by claiming some more lost revenue. But it might mean that we don't have as much money left for some of the direct expenses that we had counted on. But it, it's a little early to, you know, it's, it's like a, it's putting together puzzle pieces and we'll have a better sense of that a few months down the road.
Great, and then I, I'm sorry, Mac, I think the only other question I would have is that. This is helpful to figure out where things would look like if we continue the downward trend. At some point, I think it would be helpful for us to start to figure out how to counter the downward trend and how, what are we going to do proactively? To stabilize or increase enrollment rather than spend, I mean, I know that this is important, but we're focusing a lot of energy about. What things look as we continue to decline and, you know, we're, I, I know in our meetings, we've not talked a lot about how we reverse this trend. How do we get more students, how do we get more credits, what are we doing? How do we make this picture more positive? Um, so hopefully at some point, we can refocus a little bit of the conversation on, you know, changing the trend.
Sure, that, that, that's a great point, I think that one of the, the. One of the things about sort of the finance discussions is that, you know, sometimes the, the, the finance role ends up giving, you know, talking about sort of the. Yeah, we're focusing on the financial situation, what sometimes is potential bad news, being conservative as we tend to be. I think that some of those strategic discussions around enrollment are happening more in the internal, external committee. But if anyone else from the, from the stick team wants to chime in about that, you know.
I was just going to amplify that for, for trustees, I know it will feel a little siloed, I think that's a great call out, Vicky. But we do focus heavily on that in the internal, external committee because it is programmatic. And we really do those dives, just as we're doing a deep dive fiscally here, programmatically and enrollment wise. Uh, especially this idea of how do we reverse this? All that's really happening in that other committee. You know, we do try to fuse them, I think, a little bit at the larger board meetings. But we can certainly try to continue to work hard so people know there is a, there is an incredible amount of effort going into just that, just that notion about somehow trying to reverse this.
Thank you. Any other questions about?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think the takeaway there for, for Vicky's, uh, the point is a lot of conversation, internal, external, completely understood. But that context here would be helpful as well. Okay, great.
So. So if we go on, I think Jason is up next to present the quarterly revenue and spending.
Thank you, this is the revenue and spending report for quarter one from July 1st through September 30th. If we could advance to the next screen to just give some of the highlights. Um, we've got net income, net income, which is favorable in the amount of $421,000. This is largely attributed to our state appropriation being increased. Um, our FY21 formula funding was actually added to the FY22 base appropriation, which was great news. Um, in addition, as Andrea mentioned earlier, our out-of-state tuition revenue was higher than budgeted as well. So that was a favorable increase. As far as expenses go, we have an unfavorable variance of $64,000, which was due to our electricity. Uh, with the rates going up and anticipated to continue to go up in this fiscal year. Um, does anybody have any questions about this or the previous report that we were just looking at?
No question from me, any other questions from anyone else? No question, Jason.
Great, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Dr. Cook, President's perspective.
Ken, good evening, everyone, committee members, great to have the time tonight. Uh, my appreciation as well to our team for the tremendous work behind the audit. Uh, again, as we talked about Ways and Means Committee in that audit meeting earlier. It's just great to see, despite all of the complications and complexities and challenges we face, just how solid there is a fiscal core to the institution. And that really does show up in the way that our audit produces what we heard about. So again, kudos to our team and thank you for that. Um, three items that you'll see tonight, I want to be sure that we work through, you've got a, a brief slide deck. To be sure that we really see the pathway forward with what is at the highest priority level in our campus master plan and that is relocating out of building 20. So I'm going to go through that. I also want to touch on increases for our non-unit professionals. And then Andrew is going to talk about HERF student aid. So if we can go to the next slide on this. Again, we've been talking about this for a number of years now and by way of orientation for our new trustees. In 2019, we submitted to DCAM, right, that state agency, the Division of Capital Asset Maintenance and Management. For a $54 million project to fully evacuate, vacate building 20 where our school health is. What we now have is a proposal that is getting prepped for submission in December. And again, you'll see the asterisk within a decision expected by next May or June. Um, and that submission now has a combination of tech park and on-campus to help get us all the way home. That submission is going to include the rationale for this, studies and this revised plan as well as the funding elements. And yes, we do hope for letters of support from trustees, the community and industry. And that building 13 piece there is the new news, if we go to the next slide. So you'll see, there's a lot of particulars here, we have a large, very unique array in our school of health. Unlike any other community college in Massachusetts, quite frankly, that's why there's that technical piece of our middle name. You'll see the map right there. So we have three programs that with some architectural work already, we know we can map over to the tech park and what's called the NCAP. We think likely one program may need to go in building two, that's where we used to meet as trustees, right, on the seventh floor. Um, and then some like what we call workforce affiliates, like certified nursing assistant and EMT go in building 27. But really the school of health would effectively be relocated in building 13. Right now, that occupy is occupied by a number of our social science, behavioral science humanities faculty. And they're the ones who are predominantly still teaching online and is the campus that has a significant sort of de-densification or use right now. And so, um, when I've been able to talk monthly with DCAM and the Executive Office of Education. The reaction was quite different when we essentially put this option on the table with them. They, they seemed to indicate, and again, we'll, we'll have to go. They, they seem to indicate, and again, we'll, we'll have to go through a competitive process, that this is the key that unlocks this project for us. For four or five years, this current administration has been talking about reuse and repurpose of existing facilities and infrastructure across Massachusetts. This was really viewed as positive. And what we know is pandemic or not, um, we anticipate online and that mode of learning very much in our future. And so we can work accordingly. We also have to navigate things like our faculty and our union collective bargaining considerations. We have started to have those conversations with our faculty. Um, and again, uh, in some ways, because there has not been a real outcry in terms of this conversation, uh, we will take that as, as a positive. You'll also see another asset of this that the state really likes is the shrinking of the footprint. Right now in building twenty, I think again, people know we're not able to use half the building, the top two floors, and we haven't used them since two thousand and five. But we are in, in Chip's School of Health and Patient Simulation there is in about a hundred and four thousand gross square feet. We are ultimately shrinking the total footprint of the school health between these multiple places that you see here to about seventy-six, maybe seventy-eight thousand square feet. So there is an efficiency building part of this process as well. I'll take the next slide. So here's the funding stack, if you will. Again, new news on this, when we submitted back in two thousand nineteen, the cap on the ask of D-CAN was twenty-five million. That has been elevated to thirty million. So you see that reflected there. What are we asking the state through this agency in particular to put on the table? We also have, again, legislative support. Our delegation went to bat for us in the January Economic Development Bill. There's five million there earmarked for us. It was not line item detailed like it could have been by Governor Baker. The ask tonight for you to take under advisement that we would then prep motions for for next month is your help in the form of six million dollars that you would approve coming out of reserves. We also have a half a million dollars that we have teed up from the foundation for, as you see, a total spend of forty-one and a half million, very different from that fifty-four million. And again, some of this is subject to, D-CAN is gonna make us do certified studies. Over ten million dollars, they have what's also called Design Select Board, where again, a, a total project manager, if you will, is selected to manage all of this. Um, but again, as you see in that sort of second asterisk there, your support in the form of a specific amount is going to be critical to this and how it's received when it's evaluated by D-CAN. And it does mirror the approach with building nineteen, right, the building behind me. Uh, back in two thousand sixteen, trustees approved three million dollars to help close that deal for that project. But I'm happy to take, take questions.
Okay, Dr. Cook.
All right.
So Dr. Cook, why are the requests of the foundation, the five hundred thousand?
We, well, I guess a couple of reasons, Mac. One is um, they have helped us in the past with things like parking lots. Uh, we've, we haven't talked about them in a little while, but they have have helped with capital in the past. And we felt like, let's utilize any and all fiscal resources that we might have. Um, so that's really part of this is even though half a million is, of course, fairly modest in the scheme of things, every little bit will help. Um, and the other part is, is we have not asked them, I think, for a second year running now to help us otherwise. Um, and again, this helps get us back in the swing of trying to engage with that foundation to really help underwrite some of the college work. So, so we just didn't want to, want to leave it off to the side when at least we could put some modest ask in the mix.
Thank you.
So how does this dollar amount at forty-one point five million compare to what was previously under discussion to move all of these programs across the street versus trying to reallocate them on campus?
Yeah, so, so again, the, 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 if we put everything across the street when we had first mapped it in two thousand nineteen, then that number was fifty-four million. And at the time, Liberty Mutual was still a tenant trustees of the tech park. So there wasn't that vacant space. So some of that number involved new construction that the tech park was willing to entertain. Things have changed a lot. Um, but what we've also found again, Vicki, is that this on-campus piece allows us to potentially save a lot of those costs. It's obviously not new construction. And building thirteen is in arguably the best shape of our buildings. It has central air, let's say, unlike some of the other more historic buildings. Some of the fundamentals really are there that help drive down some of the costs, which is how you arrive at that figure.
So the, so I think, I guess what I'm hearing you say is that this is a lower cost in total project by using space we have on campus to reallocate. But I think I heard you say then also we're asking D-CAN for more money. We're asking for thirty instead of twenty-five million. So how do we rationalize that? And what were the other funding sources for the other projects that aren't in here?
Yeah, let me, let me, let me remind myself too, we had looked at on-campus options three years ago for the submission that went in two years ago. And D-CAN actually worked with us to do studies of those. And this is where we saw some of those other buildings not including a here on campus really pushed the price up sixty million, and I think there was one that was even over a hundred million. So we did look on campus previously. Um, I believe in that fifty-four million previously. I, I think, again, yes, we, we were capped out at twenty-five million. I, I, I don't know, you know, John, with, i- if you recollect how we built that stack out, there were other things like historic tax credits, things like that in that that are not in this stack. But John, we must have got to that fifty-four million a different way, even if we hadn't put in an amount for trustees.
Do recall the historic tax credits, like you mentioned, um, there may have been one other piece that's alluding me. Um, but there was um an ask of the trustees, um, as we're asking here as well. Um, and I don't recall if there was a, um, a contribution from the foundation.
It, it, he, he bought me a little time, Vicki. I think we actually had some federal money in there, thinking that there an infrastructure bill would have gotten passed by then, so we had a placeholder for federal dollars. And the, the earmark that you see from the legislature for five million, I believe that number was higher, given what we had asked the legislature for initially as well. So that's how we covered that difference. This is why this package really does hold. I think D-CAN raised the ceiling because, well, first of all, we've seen inflation is very real and the cost of construction is very real. So they know twenty-five million doesn't get us nearly a- as public higher education built uh what it did even just a couple of years back. So that's why they've raised the threshold. And again, with that back channeling, they've really encouraged us to ask, ask for that maximum amount. And that's why this really does feel like uh it holds.
Yeah, questions?
Yeah, yeah, Mac, I have a couple of questions. Uh, one would be the, the cash that we're dealing with, is that D-CAN money that would be in reserve for this project? And when you start the project, how long it would it take for the full implementation of this move?
Great questions, Jeff. So um. So I would say, so the D-CAN money, right, the thirty million is a sort of separate process with cooldowns uh in the future. But the six million dollars from you, right, that is our money, that is your money, that is money trustees control. So there isn't anything with any of the other D-CAN funded deferred maintenance dollars in this right now. So let me just first check and see if that answers the first part of your question.
Well, it does, does that mean we have to allocate for that in our budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, perhaps even twenty-four?
Yeah, that, like, i- if, if, let's say for, for argument's sake, the, the amount under investment, right? Which is a separate number than what the audited financials say, but under investment, let's say the college has thirty million. It's almost like you trustees are putting an earmark in place for six million of that for a time in the future when that would be formally allocated. So we, yes, we would drop that down. And there are ways, of course, to, to track that and, and, and manage that, but the money would still stay under investment because to the second part of your question, it is likely a three-year project to actually cut the ribbon and get in there. A year for architecture and design and potentially two years from uh remodeling, reconstruction, reconfiguration of all this. That's what it took two years from groundbreaking behind me to ribbon cutting on building nineteen. So that's not a bad benchmark. What you need to do is add in the extra time for the architecture and design. And so that's why we don't need the six million tomorrow. We wouldn't need to divest that next year. It's really, hopefully, if the, again, the markets remain well, uh, we can earn some interest on that. And in the future, we know where that allocation is gonna come from.
Is there any, is there any, but is there any budgeting for any inflationary aspects of this number versus completing the project over three years?
There is some, we'll have to contend with D-CAN, uh, because we tend to disagree with them on the escalator, uh, that they put in their formula on these things. Um, this in some ways is the sort of first effort and we'll again, get an award and then we will know from there forward, how do we contend with the potential of that? What we don't know yet is until they actually do a certified study that then requests quotes for construction costs, what we have for a per-square-footage cost to actually map against the money we have in hand. I'm not saying it's gonna be less than that, uh, forty-one and a half million, but it may not ultimately be a lot more than that. Especially because in this case, with a significant portion of the project, we're reusing an existing building. I'm really hopeful. And again, I hear optimistic signs that not only is that a good thing, but again, it can really potentially help save us some money.
Thank you.
And I do have that funding stack from the previous submission. Uh, we have uh twenty-five million from D-CAN, as you mentioned, but twenty million from that economic development bill. Uh, three point four million from the historic tax credits, two point seven million from a mask infrastructure grants and three millions uh from stick reserves.
Yeah, so that's what's nice in all this trustees is, okay, we have the cold reality, twenty million became five million from the legislative process on that earmark. Okay, but also we pulled out the debt. There is no debt service in this, which again is pretty, a pretty significant place to continue to maintain. So even though it was only two point seven million, John, it sounds like it's good that under the circumstances, we continue to avoid having to incur uh any of that debt.
What three programs are proposed to go across the street to the uh tech park?
Yep. So again, n- nothing totally set in, in firm concrete right now, but um, these are three programs. Dental, occupational therapy assistant and physical therapy assistant. And they are essentially programs that invite the community to come to them for clinicals. That's why they really do nest nicely together. And that's again, how we've potentially mapped them to across the streets of the tech park. There's good parking over there. Again, the end cap is a, is a helpful shell in this case because dental has some really particular aspects. It needs water lines, suction, some really unique programmatic aspects uh that allow that space to better be utilized.
Dr. Cook, what other funding sources do we have if we don't get the full thirty from D-CAN?
I, I mean, I honestly, off the top of my head, I would say, um, I mean, you all as trustees could modify that. Again, if D-CAN comes in at twenty-eight million, you know, the, is there an appetite from all of you to, to backfill that with two more million out of reserves? We could talk about debt service if you felt like you all had an appetite for that. Um, we certainly would want to exhaust grants, but again, it's tricky in this age of COVID on the capital side of things. It would have been nice to use federal money, ARPA, HERF, however you want to call that. But right now that continues to be prohibited, which is incredibly unfortunate. There may be, again, if Washington DC somehow, some way might pass an infrastructure bill for community colleges to access money that way, that could potentially help with offsetting, especially if there's some escalation in costs. So we would definitely, Mac, turn over every stone, which is again, why you see us also just looking for a, a, a modest request from the foundation as well.
Yeah, I was thinking more aligned, D-CAN came back with twenty, so there's a ten hole. Then what, what would we do?
I, I, I mean, I and I, I, I don't gamble. I promise you. And I don't want to feel that way. I, I think there are some really good chance, a good chance from us to get full funding. We have talked with D-CAN so much, the commissioner knows if John Cook is calling, it's gonna talk, be about building twenty. The Secretary of Education knows stick in the second part of that is gonna be building twenty. I, our legislative delegation has literally been in the ears of the governor and lieutenant governor. I, I, I like to think we have left, we have ticked every box in the way to why thirty million is such an incredibly important stabilization for an array of workforce programs that honestly, under pandemic circumstances, have, have only shown people even more why this investment is that worthwhile. So again, I, I, I do like our chances.
We know what the total of the allocation expected is that we're requesting thirty million of.
In the past, it used to be a hundred and forty million annually that D-CAN had for major capital projects, which is why off of the two thousand nineteen submissions, they only awarded five projects in total. And again, other entities like, let's say, the state universities, this is why they, they, they do debt service and bonding and other things like that, is they'll take on the debt to cover some of that shortfall, which again, they have different enrollment mechanisms, right? They have wait lists with their admissions process in a way that a community college doesn't. UMass is a different story. Uh, again, forgive me for losing my train of thought there. But um, the wild card in all of this is how does the legislature right now with, with the deli, with the governor work out how they allocate their federal dollars? They could potentially help with infrastructure by also upping the amount D-CAN has for these projects. But again, that's a, of course, a political process.
Thank you.
Mr. Rolland, did you have a question? Oh, okay, all right. So, so Dr. Cook, I know you're, you're not asking for anything um this evening of the committee, other than just an awareness and to, to think about whether or not we would be willing to earmark six, at least at this point, six million dollars, you know, for this and for a vote at next month's meeting. Is that, is that what you're?
Yeah, if we take the next slide and some, I see your hand too. So the, this is, this is the next, key next steps is our school deans have discussed this with faculty. So no, again, that was an important contin- contingency internal. We do want to now formalize your approval next month. Mac, at Ways and Means, we can, we can work up a, a, a motion. And then it would go in front of the full board, but of course, not until the twenty-second, which allows us to still then hit that deadline for submission with D-CAN by December twenty-third.
Okay.
Okay, I did, I did have a, a quick question uh on the, on the half a million dollars request for the SCCC Foundation. Would that be a fundraising effort or do they currently have the funds?
They have that. I don't have the number offhand. I, I want to say they have about five million, give or take. John, I don't know, given the finite, audit financials, about five million under investment. Um, so that, again, we wanted to work with known quantities. And so again, knowing how they've helped us with parking lots in the past and even the annual uh capital contribution, it seemed like, and again, in our conversations with them and with that board, that they uh had that appetite for that half million. John, go ahead.
Four point six million.
Yeah, four point six million they have under investment.
Okay, thank you.
So we see, we hope that that is a, a, a good roadmap forward, everyone. So next month, just don't want you to be surprised that the contours of this, that there's a request, that there's a motion teed up for your consideration. And again, it doesn't mean the day after we're, we're pulling six million out of investment. It really is a wonderful, formalized way for you uh to put right in there um your uh imprint, if you will, on this significant project for us.
So, Mac, I'll just make a final, just a final comment on that. And um, a- again, I think we need to figure out how to bring together the discussion about stabilizing the decline and hopefully some growth going forward because it's hard to consider a request for six million dollars, which is double what was requested with the last submission. Um, when our trends are so negative and at least in, in our committee meetings, and maybe they're being discussed at um, internal and external, but I don't see that there's a whole lot of discussion about how this is gonna get stabilized and how we're gonna grow back out of this position. So to spend these funds and to have the con, the trend continue, I think would be sort of a difficult situation for us to be presented with in the request for, and a, you know, a six. I think would be sort of a difficult situation for us to be presented with in the request for, you know, a six million dollar allocation. So how does, whether it's the new building, the new space. Other things that we're doing, how does that? Positively impact our financial position? That it would make sense, and I know we have to deal with these things. We've been talking about it for a long time, but. How it would make sense to allocate, you know, six million dollars worth of funds to these projects?
Yeah, three, three brief points, and again, we'll, we'll tee that up as part of the request next month. One is to really be clear that this is actually part of stabilization, that there's so much risk on the current building. That if we somehow get flooded out of building twenty. That's the type of exposure that we have been looking at for the last. Four or five years that we've been talking about this. So this really is actually stabilization. Um, and it's quite concerning. Again, when you carry seventy million of deferred maintenance on building twenty right now. This is, this is what it looks like. Also, there is the, the broader, harder issue. Of the defunding of public higher education, the amount of state support. Has been eroded year over year, decade after decade, and that's a macro trend that's hard for any of us to counter. What it pushes down is. A more local obligation, just as you have to contend with now, what was three million? Back in two thousand sixteen is now six million today, and for a lesser total project cost as well. That's really unfortunate, but of course, that is the way. Higher education funding has gone. And the third thing too, is I, I do want to be really clear. This isn't even about program growth. The School of Health has been very consistent, and as we've talked about. We're not in a position to even expand these programs. We would lose more money on them. Which is why we've never framed this as an enrollment strategy. This is about stabilizing a building. That is hugely problematic for us by vacating it. And this really is where we've landed and really tried to manage the cost piece of the whole thing. So. We've been really contentious with folks in Boston to not oversell at all of a sudden our enrollment, but I will say this. If we could walk you, and we, we can, if we could walk you through building twenty again. It's not the best way. To market your marquee programs, even again, if our students. By an average of three to one, apply to nursing and don't yet get in. We would have a far better showcase with a building thirteen and a tech park. To show future students who might be staying in general studies for a year or two. Than what we have to offer them right now. It really is problematic. In many ways that we're still in building twenty.
Okay, um, thank you, Dr. Cook, for taking us to do that, and then a heads up, you know, for, uh, next, uh, next month's meeting. Thank you all for the robust questions a, a, around this, as, as we've all said. Many conversations are around this for multiple years, you know, so. It'd be nice to do something, right? So rather than, rather than talk about it. So Dr. Cook, would be good to see, you know, the detail next month that describes why it makes sense for this committee and the full board. To approve the funding level of, of six million in the detail, um, as, as we prepare for next month's meeting. So, great, okay, so with that, um, we've got, there's no old business, any new business?
No, we just got two more items, Max. Again, we'll, we'll be in your, in your packets, again, wanted to be sure that, uh, the trustees knew about salary increases that have been enabled. By the commissioner, and you'll have seen that memo in the packet. So there's details there, so, um, we have the ability to provide a retro. To last July for our non-unit professionals, it's two and a half percent. You'll see a retro to this past July of two percent. And then a one-time payment, and you'll see equivalent of one and a half percent. The college interprets that one, one-time payment as what we have already done. We did that in June. We talked with the board about that. We had to really hustle that piece up, and I believe we provided a single dollar amount of seventeen hundred. To any non-unit professionals that were employed by the college as of that date in June. And by the way, that money was paid off of that one time was paid off of last fiscal year's dollar amount. Again, the, the key piece to this is unlike our two collective bargaining units. Our non-unit professionals do not get cost of living adjustments. They don't get step or grade increases automatically based on longevity, none of that. So this really allows us to continue to take care of a group of about ninety employees. Uh, and again, we wanted to be sure that you were, you were well aware of that.
So are these three separate dollar amounts and what do they equate to, um, in terms of what's the dollar amount? In total for the retro for fiscal, back to fiscal twenty. Act of July of twenty one, and then is this an additional one and a half percent on top of the retroactive and the currently proposed two percent?
Yep, Andrea, you want to jump in?
Sure, it's some, so the retros, it's about, um. You know, overall, the retros is about two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, but in, in terms of like, what's going to add to the base? Like the thing that sort of got my attention is that when we look at what we budgeted for salaries for this year. Given the current sort of list of people we have in, in the NUP positions, um. You know, these increases will increase the base salaries by about two hundred and twenty thousand. To, to the, you know, for the total amount of NUP salaries.
For, so that, that dollar amount is the two and a half, the two and the one and a half?
Um, well, what happens is like the, the, there are some restrictions, and so it's not the. It's not. Like an additive, by the way, the one and a half, so the one and a half is not included in those calculations because as Dr. Cook mentioned, that's already been paid, so that, that's not a, a new number. That, that number. Was about one. I don't remember, maybe one oh four, one ten, Jason probably has that number if he's, um, he's got that handy, but, um.
So the third line item's already been paid.
Right, the third line item's been paid.
So it's really the, what is the total amount of the two other items? And was that in the budget? And if not, does that then? Create. You know, a, a loss to that dollar amount that needs to get made up somewhere else?
And so, so the two and a half percent, so the retro on the two and a half percent is about hundred and. Hundred and six thousand, and then the, the two percent increase is about hundred and twelve thousand, so the, but we did have some. We had assumed about a one and a half percent increase in the budget. So the net of that is about. The net is. About a hundred thousand impact on the twenty two budget.
So if everything stays even, that would create a hundred thousand dollar loss?
Yes, although, you know, it's a small percentage of the overall budget, so remember that the, so the, the NUP salary budget is, is over eight million dollars. So we also have, you know, offsetting that, we have some vacancies, et cetera, so I'm not worried about. Where we're going to land at the end of the year. When it comes to total. Uh, NUP salary expenses, because there are just a lot of pluses and minuses that, that factor in over the course of the year. What, what has my attention more is the impact on the salaries going forward, which. You know, I think the increases are necessary, but we'll have to factor that in in the twenty three budget. You know, understanding that the, the base budget overall has increased by about two hundred and twenty thousand.
So to summarize, so there's an impact to this fiscal year, but you think we got net, we got that covered. Cause we got some pluses that you're seeing kind of, kind of coming through that you'll start to demonstrate for us in the, in the forecast. You know, as, as we meet, so that's good. Your concern is, you know, obviously now you got a bigger base of salaries that you know have to cover in future years.
Exactly.
Okay, you're talking about a couple hundred thousand here, okay, all right.
Appreciate that, Mac, that's exactly right there, yeah. Happy to take other questions about that. And then, and I think we have just one last slide, again, from Andrea on, uh, again, this is student support, student aid.
So I'll be quick here, so just wanted to give you an update. This is, this is the, the HERF. Student funds, not including the institutional fund. So at the last meeting, we, we let you know that we had, we had already. Used the Carissa funds, the HERF two, this is the HERF three, so the more recent, um, one update since the last time we met. So we mentioned last time that we had seven point two million dollars in student funds for ARPA. We, we actually. Accepted a, another grant award of the same type of funds of two million dollars within the last, maybe it was a couple of months ago. So it must have been last month, so, um, the total student aid that we need to, uh, that we can distribute is nine point two million dollars. For. The way we're using those funds is we're, we're sending block checks to students, so kind of no questions asked checks. That's been done, you know, with the, with the. Um, the previous versions of the, the HERF funds as well. Um, so last week, we sent out. Checks to three thousand four hundred and five students. Uh, the total amount of the checks was about four million dollars. So these, uh, these charts show the distribution between the, the Pell eligible, the non-Pell financial aid students and the non-financial aid students. Uh, and you can see on the bottom right, um, the, the funds are supposed to be. Uh, prioritized for the highest need students, and so we've defined them as, you know, Pell being highest need, non-financial aid being lowest need, and, and you can see the amounts fifteen hundred for Pell, one thousand for financial aid students. And seven fifty for non-financial aid. So that was the distribution of the funds that we made. Uh, I think it was last week. In, in addition to that, in, in the fall, we're looking at, uh, students who have more needs than that can request additional funds through emergency requests. And we've earmarked about a million dollars for that. Uh, we already have over three hundred requests that have come in from students and, and our, our staff and student financial. Services, um, with some help from folks in, uh, in the student affairs team. They review all those requests, and, and so we've earmarked about a million dollars for that. Uh, we also are able, if students request, to use some funds to help, uh, with student balances related to tuition fees and books. So another million dollars has been earmarked for that. So in the fall, we're aiming to spend, uh, you know, to, to use about six million dollars of the funds. That would leave about three point two million for the spring. You know, so how we distribute the funds in the spring will depend on what we have left after fall. So that's just a summary, just wanted you to know, you know, how we're getting these funds to the students and see if you have any questions about that.
No question for me, anyone have any questions?
Let me just put a fine point on it, given the earlier on a question, so. Enrollment, right, and trying to reverse the trend. It's a matter of recruitment and retention. Just again, want to point out. In the name of retention. Pell eligible students of which we have a significant amount are literally going to get a check. For fifteen hundred dollars. This fall. Those are the kinds of steps we are taking. To really ensure students can hang in there with us. Again, I think that's a pretty significant dollar amount that we've put on the table for a significant number of our students.
Great, thanks for adding color, Dr. Cook. Any questions? Okay, anything else, Dr. Cook, you like to go through?
No, thanks, everybody. Really important meeting for us tonight, thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, no old business, any new business? Okay, hearing none, um, well. Move to called into this meeting. Do I have a motion?
So motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, then I can call the roll, please.
Mary Kay Maren?
Yes.
Max Starks?
Yes.
Vicky Kraus?
Yeah.
Amalid Holgan?
Yes.
Norman Rondan?
Yes.
And Jeff Sattler?
Yes.
Great, thank you all very much, have a great.